Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski.
Here.
Mr. Liscavich.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith. Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Present.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Attorney General.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the Luzerne County subdivision and land development ordinance to incorporate a revised fee schedule. Anybody in the audience for public comment on the ordinance? Anybody on the Zoom? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. We'll have the voting session at 6:01 PM. Thank you. ... Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby urge residents of Luzerne County and all of northeastern Pennsylvania to be screened for early detection of colon cancer, participate and support the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute in its colon cancer awareness efforts, and designate the month of March as Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and March 27, 2025, as Casual Day in Luzerne County. Thank you.
Does that mic come?
Oh, just turn the mic on for her.
The other side?
There we go.
I won't talk much, but I did want to thank you all for having me here, for recognizing this proclamation. As you said, it's over 20 years of this event, and it's amazing how much support we get. Casual is an acronym, as you had read, but it is a dress-down event where participants dress down at work or at school or within their community, anywhere, and they participate by wearing a designated designed shirt each year, socks or hat. The importance of this is to have casual conversations about your family history, about risk factors that you may have, and one of our important messages is to be screened. The recommended screening age now is 45. If you're at average risk, meaning you have no risk factors, the appointed age is now 45. So it's just a reminder of this every year, and T-shirts are still available before Thursday, Casual Day, at Harold's Pharmacy and at Garrity Sansui Parkway and at our office. We do have a Wilkes-Barre office right here on North Franklin Street. We've been in the community for 30 years, and we are a resource to you on anything related to cancer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have a designation for 4H, and there are some members of 4H that would like to maybe say a few words after the proclamation. You can come up and receive the proclamation as well. Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country, and whereas 4H has helped 131 youth in Luzerne County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing, and whereas 4H in Pennsylvania is delivered by Penn State Cooperative Extension in rural areas, small towns and cities in all 67 counties of the Commonwealth to more than 77,000 youth ages 5 to 18, and whereas 4H youth in Pennsylvania are served by a network of staff members and more than 6,000 adult volunteers who engage and mentor youth in learning activities and hands-on projects and topics such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness, and whereas Pennsylvania's 4H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids to achieve and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Luzerne County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them, and whereas 4H's network provides youth with opportunities for leadership, development, career exploration, problem solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim March 16 through the 23rd, 2025, as Pennsylvania 4H Week throughout Luzerne County, and encourage our citizens to acknowledge and celebrate 4H for its valuable service and continued efforts to empower youth with a foundation of success for a lifetime. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Mercerow, and I'm the new Client Relationship Manager for Area 4 for Penn State Extension. Thank you for having us tonight. Two words come to mind when I think of 4H: inspire and prepare. It inspires students to think bigger, and it prepares them to do better. I had a list of things that 4H offers, but it's already been listed in our proclamation, so I'll just go ahead and introduce Jennifer Heinlein, who has been our 4H educator since 2023. Many people think of farm animals, which is very important, and we do have that when they think of 4H, but Jennifer brings something interesting to it. She has a cat program and a dog program. She teaches them agility. I wouldn't even do the program justice, but I did send over a slide deck which had some information in there, and the cat program is coming up. It's a two-day show this weekend where they will compete with other people across the entire northeast region, so thank you, Jennifer, for all you bring to the students. We have Zaid Beloma with us tonight and Ryan Heinlein. One of the things that I think 4H does is it brings students that might be a little bit introverted or quiet, and it gets them to really become leaders. And one of the things it has done for Zaid, he's nonverbal, and it has brought him out and able to lead in programs that he participates in. So I just want to say thank you. If anybody has any interest in 4H or other extension programs, please find me after the meeting, or you can look up at extension.psu.edu. And thank you, as always, for your support, to all of you.
Thank you very much. Finally, we have a proclamation for the Battles of Lexington and Concord, which Councilman Haas will be reading.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the council members for supporting this proclamation. We're coming up on the 250th anniversary of the very first battle of the American Revolution. To members of the public, I'm sure the local media and the national media will be reporting on this, but this is really something to celebrate, so thank you, Mr. Chair, again. The proclamation reads, whereas on April 19, 1775, the Battles of Lexington and Concord in Massachusetts marked the commencement of the eight-year struggle for colonial independence known as the American Revolutionary War, with a quote "shot heard around the world." And whereas these historic confrontations demonstrated the unwavering resolve of American patriots to defend their rights and freedoms against tyranny, and whereas April 12, April 19, 2025 commemorates the 250th anniversary of these pivotal battles as an opportunity to reflect upon the sacrifices made by those who fought for our nation's independence, and whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize and celebrate this significant milestone in our nation's history as we acknowledge the enduring principles of freedom, justice, and self-governance that continue to guide our nation. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim 2025 as a day of remembrance and celebration in honor of the 250th anniversary of the Battles of Lexington and Concord, and encourage all citizens to reflect upon the enduring legacy of our nation's founding principles.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? I do actually have one addition that I would like to add. I'd like to entertain a motion for. I would like to make a motion to add a motion regarding the review of the Nanticoke Bridge Statements of Interest. And if anybody would like an explanation of that, I'm happy to explain.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there anybody who wants explanation?
Just on the question?
Sure.
Chairman, so is that, if that's a voting issue, we have to vote on receiving the report?
No, no. So what my thought is, I really would like us to streamline this process. As we've, I'm sure, heard from a number of residents throughout the Nanticoke area and the West Nanticoke Plymouth area, I would like to at least streamline the process of paring down the bids so that council doesn't have to necessarily be involved in every single little aspect of this. We obviously will have to approve one of the top three at the end, but right now I believe there are five statements that were received. Is that correct, Commissioner Crocamo? I don't really think that it's necessary for us to go from reviewing the five statements then to go to the three technical bids. So I think if we can handle the process to the administration, let them streamline it and get it done as quick as possible, then bring it to us, we can go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So the motion is to streamline the process by allowing the five letters of interest from the engineering firms to allow the administration to pare that down to three?
Yes, that's what the motion is. That we're voting on adding it to the agenda right now, not to pass it.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's added. That'll be number six on under council items. Any other additions or deletions? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on agenda items only. Is anybody in the audience for agenda items only? Controller Griffith?
The only item I wanted to talk about is item number two on the agenda. That was to renew the lease for the city of Nanticoke. Back in 2022, I believe, the Controller's Office did an audit of all the leases for the magistrate's offices, and I'm happy to see that on the agenda, that the courts is actually working towards getting those up to date, and so kudos to Court Administrator Paul Heinmarsh for that. That particular lease was 1994, believe it or not. So it's well, well past the time when we need to renew that lease, and the work that was done to get that done is very much appreciated by the Controller's Office as well as some of the others that need to be corrected, and I know he's working towards that, so I just want to thank the Court Administration and the manager for getting that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any other comments from the public in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? All right, hearing done. We'll be moving on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11, 2025 voting session? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to county manager agenda items. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the Luzerne County subdivision and land development ordinance to incorporate a revised fee schedule.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Ms. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution to renew the lease with the city of Nanticoke for Magisterial District Court, 110302.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving the allocation of opioid settlement proceeds to Luzerne Wyoming County Drug and Alcohol Department.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution providing tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Act.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
I'd like to make an amendment, Mr. Chair, on the question?
Go ahead.
If, look at page two in your, in the... Oh, no, my bad.
Time's up. No, just kidding.
That was speedy.
Just kidding.
Thank you very much.
Just kidding.
I agree with that. That's an easy one. Oh, forgive me. I had it all written down here. Just lost my paper.
What page did you say, Mr. Haas?
Oh, I was looking at the wrong one.
Page 23 starts...
Yeah, 24. Thanks, thanks, John. Page 24. If you look at the schedule, at the fee schedule, did I pass it over to you? So I move to just amend the abatement schedule. So it's Section 3.3. It's on page 24 of your agenda packet, everybody. And we got to remember, and I really appreciate Mr. Williams and Mr. Stahl and Hazelnut wanting to develop this piece of property and moving us forward into the real 21st century with AI. I think it's needed, but I just, again, question, as I've done for the past several meetings about this, the amount of the abatement. Again, knowing that we're also getting, as part of the deal, patterned after the last letter that council approved for that, the piece of property that was really mine scarred land. I see this as not being as urgent. I think this is more of, requires a little more negotiation. If we could amend the abatement schedule from years one to seven instead of 90% abatement, have that 70% abatement. So in other words, the county taxpayers will still be giving back 70% of taxes. The firm will pay 30. Year eight will be 60% abatement. Year seven will be 50% abatement, and year 10 will be 40% abatement. Years one through seven will be 70% abatement. Year eight will be 60%. Year nine, 50%, and year 10, 40% abatement. So, and again, understanding too that this is only on improvements in the property. So in these early years, there's not going to be a giant windfall for the taxpayers anyway. It's still going to be largely underdeveloped. But again, I just think if Hazelnut wants to really show forth a good faith effort, the taxpayers were still opening this up and paying about two-thirds of the taxes at the end of the day, even with this amended schedule. So I'll put that out there for councils.
Is there a second on that motion? Is there a second? You'll second? Who's second? Who's, okay. Ms. McDermott, okay. Motion and a second?
On the question.
Okay, go ahead. On the question, Mr. Wilovich, then Mr. Thor.
So, Mr. Haas, do you have the numbers of how much this would generate revenue-wise?
Yeah, so right, so right now, if you look at the approximate value of Phase One, you know, Hazelnut wants to give us about a million and change for that. So you figure one mil on all that property, you're taking maybe like $200,000 for those first seven years per...
Is that equal to, the one mil is a different thing, isn't it?
Yeah, a mil is a $1 on every $1,000 assessed property. So when you break down what the, what the figures are, you just extrapolate it from there.
Figure the 1.8, that's a payment in lieu, right?
It's what?
The first number you presented, the 1 million, what'd you say about that? Not the mil, the number?
Well, what the payment is in, when we look at what Hazelnut wants to give us in payment in lieu of taxes, you look at that pilt, and then you factor, you backtrack it from $1,000 for every, $1 per every $1,000 assessed value.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my first question, I guess, to county manager or Mr. Lombardo. Were these numbers as are printed on here, were they already presented to the developer? And were these negotiated already?
Yes, they were negotiated at the, at the infrastructure meeting, I believe, right? The Infrastructure Committee negotiated these. They were further spoken about at the work session of our previous council meeting, and we are to be voting on them.
So any other question I had, or not question, comment? I read again today, when I was reading, I think the developer has agreed to pay the county two lump sum payments or amounts of lump sum payments, aside from the schedule completely of approximately, I think it was 529,000 and I think $115 or something like that, if I remember. It was like five this morning.
I think the numbers are, they're in here somewhere.
Yeah, so it's at 1.2. It's $2,500 an acre, half upon the building permit being issued and half upon the occupancy permit.
I think it was 265 and 265, I read.
For Phase One.
Okay.
So there's going to be...
So that's a sizable amount of lump sum.
Yeah, altogether, it's going to work out to be about 1.2 million.
Okay, so we are realizing a substantial amount, aside from the schedule that we're giving back. All right, I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
No, I appreciate, Mr. Thor, too, and I will say, Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the discussion, you know, we're going to rate a vote on this, that the previous project, that was mine scar land, and I thought that was a very, very valuable project. This, there's been a tenant identified, so the big difference here is that somebody's going to move into here very quickly. Okay, and that's a principal difference. These lawyers, I categorically really disapprove of some of them, but I think some are more beneficial than others. And I know we've been, are on this on the, on Mr. Sabatino's Infrastructure Committee, as well as last week's working session, so I'm just carrying through what, I just think the majority of people would support this.
Thank you. I just want to add one comment to the conversation here that, just kind of a correction on something Mr. Haas said earlier, that the taxpayers would be footing 70% of the bill for this. That's not, in his amendment, that's not accurate. The taxpayers won't be paying anything for this. If this mine scarred, or if this land was to remain undeveloped, we would be getting no additional revenue from the land, regardless of what happens for the upcoming, you know, years, decades, whatever. By giving this tax abatement, we're encouraging somebody to develop this undeveloped land. In most cases, yes, it is mine scarred, and in this case, we're bringing a different kind of set of jobs to this, to this area of the county, which I think that's something that people on this council have discussed before, is something they want to see if we're bringing, if we're, you know, bringing potential tax abatements in front of this body. And, but the taxpayers are not actually paying any money. The county's not paying any money to give a tax abatement. What we're doing is we're delaying the receipt of the money that we would receive, but we are still receiving more money than we would if we had not developed the land. So it's, I mean, I personally don't see the downside to this when it comes to the economics of it, when it comes to, I mean, we can have discussions about what the benefits or detractions of having a facility like this in that area of the county would be, but as far as the economics, I don't really, I don't really see the downsides to this personally. Go ahead. Mr. Liscavich?
And I remember during the work session, these jobs are going to pay well. These aren't...
aren't 15, 18 dollar an hour jobs. So this is something that I think that we should welcome with open arms because that's, they're great jobs, and we need them in this area. And I agree with John and everything he said, and I think that this is something that should happen.
Any other comments from council members?
Yeah, I, I will just say too, if I could, Mr. Chair, and, and you're absolutely right. I, forgive me, I'm trying to explain this for the edification of the public that might not understand all the nuances, and you're absolutely right. We're getting no tax assessment on any, or any taxes on non-development there. You're absolutely right about that. But again, the, the age-old argument is we're, we're putting our fingers on the scales, we're helping out one area or one firm develop land that maybe might be developed elsewhere. And that's, that's again, what we got to keep in mind. This is the one chance that we, as a brick and mortar institution, Luzerne County, we have a chance to recoup some of, of the risk too, because we're, we're taking a risk too, because we're giving away, uh, a tax credit, tax break to a developer where we're not giving it to some other people. So just that age-old argument, but thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree with that to some extent, but I will, I will say that after reading through the LURDA law, I do believe that there's opportunities for other individuals, you know, individual developers to actually utilize this LURDA law instead of just somebody that's building a large facility. Obviously, this is something that, you know, it happens, we see this because it's a large amount of money, but individuals, I believe, could also utilize this law. Um, all right, any other comments?
Can we call a question?
Sure.
Oh, the question's been called. Sorry. All right. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
This is on the amendment.
This is, no, no, I, oh, it is? Oh, okay. All right, go ahead.
No, it's, it's, it's new call, please.
Yes, yes, yes. Go ahead. And then you can comment on after. Sorry. Go ahead. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Thanks, Harry. Uh, I think the government has a place to assist in economic development, but I really believe we must find a fair balance between encouraging such development and our taxpaying people. So I vote yes to this amendment.
Ms. Steven, Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No on the amendment.
Mr. Wilovich?
No on the amendment.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
No.
Mr. Liscavich?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Five yes, six no, fails.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, do you want to make a comment now for, on the question?
Hi.
Okay.
I do have some to answer.
Do you, okay.
I have another amendment offer.
Okay.
Uh, under the procedure for obtaining, obtaining exemption, uh, I think we've had some really good conversations in our legislative session, and we've had some very good conversations in general about really investing in our workforce. So I'd like to add an amendment to this, um, under the procedures of obtaining the exemption, that in order to be eligible for such an exemption, I, the, uh, for this program, the developer must place priority on hiring Luzerne County workers.
Okay. Is that, uh, where, would you, where would you place that? And would it be for, uh, 3 point?
Workers who are paid people in the workforce for the... Yeah, 3.1.
Okay.
3.1, 0.8.
Ms. Smith, can I ask a question? Was this...
I don't think that's my...
Is there a second? Is there a second on that?
I, well, if we want to discuss if there has...
I'll second it for discussion purposes. Go ahead.
Uh, is this to build or to, uh, to staff?
To build.
Okay.
Because the LURDA has to do with the building of the property. I mean, I'd love it to be staffed too, but we'll start where we can.
Uh, Attorney Skeen, I'd like to ask a question, if that's okay. Is this something that we can place into our contract that would be legal?
One, I don't... I don't know that it would be legal or practical, because we'd be hamstringing the developer, and if they couldn't find people to build in the, um, in, from Luzerne County, it would, the project would fail.
That's not at all what the amendment says. It just says place priority on hiring Luzerne County workers. Instead of having companies bus people up from Kentucky, which I know has happened in the past with these kind of developments, I'd much prefer to see at least an incentive for them to hire Luzerne County workers. Furthermore, I don't know why, I don't believe it would be against the law, as we make our own, we're the people who decide how a, an applicant becomes eligible for such LURDA. For example, they are eligible for LURDA if we passed, uh, the new schedule that Councilman Haas had just, uh, suggested. It's simply us deciding who is eligible for our own LURDA.
Mr. Thornton?
Okay, uh, well, that caught me kind of as surprised. I wasn't aware of this at the meeting, but, uh, um, I, I, one thing came to mind immediately was that when franchises of very popular, uh, countrywide organizations, companies are built, such as a Burger King or McDonald's or Arby's or typically, those corporations bring in their crews of workers because they're all the same kind of building structure utilities, things like that. And, uh, they've built 30 of them already, 40 of them, and these workers know exactly how to proceed. And, uh, I think for us to kind of, it would tie the hand somewhat of the developer to, uh, make any kind of requirements. I mean, we could say prioritize, but who's, who's going to decide at the end of the day whether or not they really prioritize? Would there be a litigation there, investigation? I'm not so sure, um, this helps free enterprise in the development of something like this. Uh, the, the other thing I want to ask, was this concept discussed at all with the developer before tonight?
No, I was not a...
Okay, all right, thank you.
I, I can weigh into that, being a member of the committee, if I couldn't answer Mr. Thornton's question.
Yeah.
So, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, members of the committee, so Patty and Jimmy, but uh, when we talked with Mr. Stahl, Mr. Williams, they said every attempt we made to utilize local labor when possible. So I, I think, I think that's what you're asking, John. I don't think you're making anything binding necessarily, but I think it's just codifying our desire that we would use local labor when possible. I don't, I don't think it hamstrings the developer in any way. I think it's just a encouragement. If, I don't want to speak for you either.
No, I, I appreciate it.
But to answer Mr. Thornton's question, that did come up in discussion. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy and Patty.
Um, additionally, to the question that Vice Chair asked in how to prioritize, it's kind of the same way of asking, making them promise they're not going to just leave after 10 years when they're finally supposed to pay taxes all the time. We have to rely on the good word of our developer. There's simply too many small details to hammer out completely in litigation or a contract like that. I mean, we can't force them to stay after 10 years, but we hope that they will when they're supposed to be paying all of their taxes. It's, it's much like this when we ask them to prioritize. And if the developers themselves, especially for this one, already in, in indicated that they were introducing local labor, I don't see any reason for this council not to support prioritizing the use of our local labor.
Uh, Mr. Wilovich, then Mr. Thornton.
I would just like to see what North Point has to say about this, if possible.
Uh, would the representatives of North Point like to make...
Yes, happy to. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Great questions, great dialogue. On the use of local labor, I, we are supportive of that, but I think you're identifying some of the issues of saying, if, if it's prioritizing use of local labor, absolutely. That's a no-brainer to us. It's like what we try to do with all of our projects. It would just be the difficulty of how's that being quantified? There is that good faith effort. We do that already. Um, that would be, you know, when we're developing the projects, we usually are hiring a general contractor, and then the general contractor has certain obligations there. So we will certainly make that, um, statement known to general contractors to try to use local labor when, when feasible.
Go ahead.
So I'm not sure what the problem with prior, putting it in the code and codifying that we prioritize local labor.
Is this, is this something that...
Seems like they're already doing that.
You would have necessarily an issue with?
No.
I mean, it really isn't. It's not necessarily binding. That's, that's certain, that's for certain in the, the way the language is written.
That's right.
But you, you already are promising to do that, which I don't know that it's necessary to have the language, but, you know, if, if it was in there, I don't think it would be necessarily an issue.
That's right. And, and if, if it was brought up before this evening, we've been happy to propose language in it, and might have said something in a, in a preamble, maybe in a whereas clause, whereas Luzerne County Council in passing the resolution has recognized the importance of utilizing local labor and encourages the use of local labor, something like that, more of, you know, a, a non-binding statement at the beginning as a preamble. That's, you know, on the cuff, that, that's where I would have put something like that into the, um, resolution, but happy to have that included. No objection on our part.
Okay. All right, Mr. Thornton?
I, I think then it's, uh, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
It helps me. Um, you can stay there a minute in case we have another question. But, um, if we are going to actually vote on an amendment, and if that amendment passes, I would like to see some very specific language on it rather than just saying, you know, we're going to encourage or prioritize hiring Luzerne County labor. Um, I would like to see a more detailed description of that amendment wording, such as however, uh, this is not binding on the developer or contractor, um, should be put outside Luzerne County. And if that proves to be the case, uh, there is no ramifications or penalties against the contractor. I, I'm not sure how that should be, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure how that amendment should be worded.
Ms. Smith and then Mr. Liscavich.
The, the more you put into something, the more you hamstring yourself. So by making it open-ended, you've now made it open-ended. I mean, just saying that they are to prioritize local labor, it doesn't, it does not say that there's a repercussion. It doesn't say that they have to. It's non-binding. So like, in general, when you're writing laws and you want, because I'm assuming that you don't, aren't for this. Vice Chair, Vice Chair, is that correct?
Uh, I got it.
Did, did you hear, I asked you a question.
What was the question?
I'm, I'm assuming that you're not in love with this amendment. Am I right?
No, based on what they said, I would support the amendment. I just don't want to push them into traffic, so to speak.
So, yeah.
I'm curious to know what their...
With less words.
Yeah, I'm curious to know what their comment is on your comment.
Go ahead, if you'd like to.
Have a chance to push them into traffic.
Yeah.
I'd like to finish my sentence. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead. And then Mr. Liscavich. Sorry. Go ahead, guys. If you're, if you have, do you have a comment to make on that?
Um, other than if we would have had more time before this evening being put on the spot, we could wordsmith it perfectly and, and hopefully address all of council's comments.
Yeah.
Um, again, if it's a loose statement about putting priority or the importance of, of labor, using local labor, we're fine, obviously, with having that included in the preamble. Just clarification that it's, that it's not binding, just because then it creates, um, complexity of policing and has it been met, has it not been met? Just creates, uh, and gets away, I think, from the intention. I mean, the intention here is obviously in, in getting the improvements built. You know, the other components of, of the operational side of things is outside the, the context of real estate tax piece, but we will, we have that commitment. We do that already, and so we have no issue of a general statement being put in the preamble. That's non-binding.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Liscavich?
So where I have a problem is this was put through the infrastructure, brought to us for a work session. We discussed it. There was plenty of time before this meeting to bring up any changes that should have been made but weren't. Now we sit here at the last hour to do it, once again, which I find rather annoying. But in addition to that, we're arguing over a point that's mute, because they're saying they're willing to do it, but they're not going to hell with their feet to the fire. So it's kind of a mute point zone. I don't even know why we're talking about it, to be honest. It makes no sense.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Sabatino?
Councilwoman Smith, would you be, uh, open to a friendly amendment where we make it a whereas, like they suggested?
Councilman Haas threw my papers in the air when he grabbed my thing, so I can't find the beginning of it. I don't think there are, I don't think there is a whereas. There, where, okay, I can't find it.
I'll find it.
Uh, did you find yours? Oh, there it is. Oh, no.
Is the resolution...
Yeah, there's no whereas.
This would be on page 23 that we're, we're talking about right now.
Yeah, is there a whereas? I mean, there's the, the background, but I don't think there's a whereas.
If, if anywhere, I think it could go underneath the final paragraph.
In the background?
Yes.
Uh, so Luzerne County Council believes that providing tax exemptions will encourage new industrial, commercial, uh, and turn lead to additional tax revenue for Haysville Township.
Okay, not as a whereas then, but as a, um...
It's the loosest, most...
Yeah, and I'm just asking if we could put it in before the now, therefore be it resolved. Whereas Luzerne County Council encourages the use of, of local labor when appropriate.
So do you want to change these all to whereas? Whereas under the local economic...
That's, yeah, that's getting a little too, we don't have to even put the whereas. We can just put the Luzerne, Luzerne County Council also believes in prioritizing local labor in this and all construction projects. Ba, 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 whatever.
So underneath...
Would you be, would you be open to that as a friendly amendment?
It's a start.
You...
I, yes, I would.
All right, so the language, go ahead.
So, yeah, hang on, hang on, we're out of order.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to vote on something today, we need to have the language. We can add it later on.
Yes.
But if we're going to vote for something, I mean, if you're just looking here to vote for an amendment that we're going to come to at a later date, that's fine. But if we're going to do an amendment that we want to then vote on this to get this over with finally, then we'd have to have the exact language we're putting into it. You guys know what you're voting for.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm writing that.
Right, go ahead.
And I think, uh, Chair Lombardo had it. Uh, Luzerne County Council, what did you say?
Luzerne County Council also believes in the prioritization of local labor in projects where tax abatements are, um, being approved. Or in, in this particular, in this, uh, in this particular project, uh, local labor is encouraged where possible. Something like that. Is that okay?
I think that's very good.
Okay.
The Luzerne County Council also believes in the prioritization of the use of local labor in which tax abatements are being utilized, and therefore believes that, do you remember what you said?
Therefore recommends.
Therefore recommends.
There you go.
Recommends, even stronger. Recommends that the use of local labor be prioritized in the, I think in this project.
Yeah, I'd say in this project, just so we're specifying.
Prioritize.
And if... Councilman Sabatino?
In this project.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I didn't mean to speak out of order.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, we, if it's becoming more and more narrowly tailored to this specific project, I would say it gets away from the broad statement of the encouragement of using local labor in general. Um, so...
It's one thing in the other place.
I, I might just make the comment that, that I, I would like the opportunity to read it, but, but it seems that it's putting more of a requirement than being what the aspirational statement is, which I think was the whole point of the amendment, was
statement is, which I think was the whole point of the amendment, was creating an aspirational statement for use of local labor when possible.
All right, I'll be honest with you, I sort of agree with Councilman Lescavage that this is really a last-minute amendment that...
Well, I understand.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I generally would be supportive of something like this, I think other council members have said the same thing, but to have this language being wordsmithed on the floor of the voting session is time-consuming and might not bring us the result that we're necessarily looking for.
So just to be, just to be fair, it says the Luzerne County Council also believes in the prioritization of the use of local labor in which tax abatements are being utilized, and therefore recommends that the use of local labor be prioritized in such projects akin to the within project.
Sure.
It doesn't say this project.
Are we going to amend?
That's what the, this is what the...
I know, but the first, you've made a motion, and it's been changed a couple of times, so you want to...
I made a motion to amend it, yeah, so we can make a motion to...
How about we withdraw your amendment and then do your new amendment?
Sure.
All right, I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my amendment.
Mr. Chair, would the public have to weigh in on this since we're adding your language?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We can amend it, no. Are you going to make me amend it again? I make an amendment to add a fourth paragraph under background that states, "The Luzerne County Council also believes in the prioritization of the use of local labor in which tax abatements are being utilized, and therefore recommends that the use of local labor be prioritized in such projects akin to the below project."
Maybe could you put in such projects, in such projects where possible, and just period?
Okay. I think it can end in just, "Be prioritized in such projects." And Chair, Chair, County Manager, do you think it should say in tax abatement projects or tax payment?
If you want my opinion...
I guess I don't.
Okay. The terms are vague.
On purpose.
They're practically meaningless. I don't know how the administration would enforce it. I don't know what the definition of priority means in this context. I don't know what the term local means in this context.
Yeah.
So I also believe it's fundamentally unfair to the developers who went through a series of negotiations that were negotiating with them on the floor, and they had no notice. It's bad business for Luzerne County to do that.
Right.
My issue is that they have no issue with it.
Well, they're stating in all of this conversation that they have been willing to do this and they prioritize this to begin with.
Right, so is this open-ended enough without saying your project and just saying such projects?
Mr. Go ahead.
If I may, you know, North Point, although we are Kansas City-based, I live in this community, Tom Williams grew up in this community, we're invested in this community, North Point has been developing in Luzerne County for about a decade, and we pride ourselves on the promises that we make or the promises that we keep, and we've kept every single promise here to Luzerne County, to its citizens, more importantly, this council. We view council as a true partner in economic development, and we mean it. And so when we make a promise, our website, not to sound corny, is beyondthecontract.com for a reason, all the words on the piece of paper mean something, our word means even more. You have our word that we will continue to try to prioritize utilizing local labor when we can. I don't want the wordsmithing on the fly here of, you know, adding to the resolution as important as it is to get in the way of our word and our commitment. You have our commitment, we've done it, we will continue to do it, we will continue to prioritize local labor in all of our projects. Please don't let that stand in the way of needing to include that in the documentation for us to live into that promise. The promise made is a promise kept, you know, in our world, and we will keep that promise that we have for the past nine years. We've had very successful development throughout Luzerne County and continue to stay here and develop going forward.
Amen.
All due respect, I don't understand then why you wouldn't want to just put that promise in words.
And I have no problem, I'm just...
Very vague words, frankly.
I'm not trying to say no to that at all, I'm just trying to say it seems like there's not consensus and agreement on council on how to handle that, so I'm saying outside of the language, that would be something that...
Mr. Wilovich, go ahead.
The language is fine, can we call the question?
There was no second?
There's no second on the motion yet. So, Ms. Smith, is that language sufficient, what you've read?
Yes, and it ends, that you...
Just reread the whole thing again.
Sure. The Luzerne County Council also believes in the prioritization of the use of local labor in which tax abatement projects are being utilized, and therefore recommends that the use of local labor be prioritized in such projects.
Okay, thank you, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, amendment fails for lack of second, there's a motion and a second on the initial resolution, roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Just thought we'd get a little better deal, I'm going to have to say no.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
And yes, one note.
Thank you. Number five, motion to adopt the resolution increasing the salary of the clerk of county council.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second just on the question, this is, this would be Ms. Lawrence's merit increase for the year, that wasn't automatically done because council has to vote on it. Also, we did confidentially, this is obviously personnel-related, but we did review her performance as council does every year, and without going into specifics, I would say she got an A-plus, if I was a teacher, so will be pretty good on this.
Does this require votes?
That could be another vote, but, all right, so there's a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Ms. Smith?
A hundred percent, yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes, and then so.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. All right, number six, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but it was the motion regarding the review of the Nanicoke Bridge statements of interest. Oh, go ahead.
I'll attempt to word it similar to what you said.
Yep.
So I would make a motion to allow the administration to evaluate and pare down the five letters of interest from the engineering firms to three interested engineering firms for the Nanicoke Bridge project.
All right, is there a motion? There's a mo, is it, are you, nobody, nobody, motion, are you the second then? Motion to the second? All right, roll call?
Just on the question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
And, you know, I think it's a wonderful motion, I'm happy to support this, but if, does council get to see the other applications if the bids aren't sufficient? If, I mean, Mr. Schem maybe wants to weigh into that, I don't know.
Manager of Congress, you want to, you want to give a little background on this and why?
They're not bids, are they?
They're not bids, they're statements of interest.
Right.
Statements of interest, yeah, sorry, thanks for...
And what the administration would do would narrow it down to three. We cannot make any of the names public right now, at some point, we will be able to do that. We have to follow the guidelines of PennDOT, so if, if, there will come a time when you will be able to see it, we can't make those, we can't make the bids public, we can't make that public, but we can give you the names.
That exactly answers my question, absolutely, and this, I have total faith in the management, by the way, no reflection on that, just want to make sure we have our, do our due diligence.
Yeah, I apologize for making this on the fly, but, you know, I think that time is of the essence in this situation. Ms. Smith?
We saw the dialogue.
Yeah, yeah.
So, right now, there's only five, right now, the only thing we can know are the names?
Right now, the only thing you can know that there are five.
There are five?
Yes.
Interested parties.
Interested parties.
Yes.
So we would not be able to know who the two were who are interested until after, when?
After we narrow it down to three.
And then if we're not happy with any of the three, we would get to know the others?
Then we have to repost, and it'll take much longer, but Nick and Michelle, Nick Vog and Michelle Sparage are here, they've been dealing with PennDOT, we're following the PennDOT guidelines.
Sure, but we wouldn't, so we would repost, we wouldn't get to know, we wouldn't get to say, okay, well, who were the other two who were interested, and let's get a bid from them?
No, you will be able to, we'll narrow it down to three, and then...
And then they're made public.
And then they're made public.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how it...
Yeah, so there's...
Happen after that, that's all.
We have five SOIs, once we narrow it down to three, PennDOT will release the three ranks, and then the two that were submitted in alphabetical order, that's when they're public.
And just, I agree, Chair, this is a matter of extreme importance and extreme timeliness. However, I'm just concerned, in function, how much time does it shave off to not look at five letters and only look at three?
Well, we just spent 30 minutes debating an amendment that failed on the floor of our voting session, so I think that if we can give...
That was cute, but I'd actually like to ask my question.
If we can give, if we can give any ability to streamline this process, because it's such, I wouldn't quite say a dire need, but it's pretty close to a dire need, because there are, you know, people that rely on that bridge for emergency-related purposes, that we need to get this, this done as quick as possible, and, and what, you know, we are going to end up approving one of those three, one of those three parties who are going to submit technical bids, we'll be able to look at all of that, that will come to council, and I'm going to encourage a special meeting at that point, so we don't have to rely on our regular meeting schedule, and then we'll do all of that and have it passed, and like I said, anything we're going to be able to do to streamline this process, I think will be helpful to the citizens of that area.
Can I just get an answer to my question, though?
Which is, go ahead, Attorney Schem, go ahead.
I think that Nick and Michelle will be able to explain the process, as I understand it, when it gets down to three, the meeting is going, we might have a 12-hour meeting. We have to, we have to, under PennDOT rules, listen to all of them together.
And we have to ask each, we have to ask each firm the same questions.
Yes, and they have to be approved by PennDOT, the questions.
And generally, how many questions are there?
That's, that's up to us, but they do have to be approved.
Right, so it's up to you guys, generally, do you know generally how many questions you ask?
Well, PennDOT will give us a list of questions that we will share with you all.
I don't, we don't have a set number right now.
There's no set number of questions.
I didn't ask for a set number, I asked for a general, okay, that's fine.
I would say maybe 10.
10, yeah.
There we go, okay, thank you for the ballpark, that's all I'm looking for.
But it's more than just like 10 quick questions and it's done.
Yeah, they would be doing a whole presentation on the scope...
And we have to listen to all the one after number.
Their technical stuff, everything. And may I say, the five firms are excellent, I don't think we can go wrong with any of them, so we will whittle it down to three, and then it will be made public.
And just like we were concerned about disenfranchising the developer in the last presentation, I'm just concerned about disenfranchising developers here, and it's only three to five, but I agree with you, this is a timely matter, and if my comments are not anything that changes anyone's mind, that's fine, I just wanted to know how much more time it would actually take to look at all of them instead of just three, because we are, it is our fiduciary duty to make sure we get the best bid, right? We are, we hold the purse strings, so by looking at more bids, we might get a better idea, by looking at more interested parties, we might get a better idea, but I agree with you, we have to balance that, Chair, with how important this situation is.
Right, by giving this responsibility to the administration for this small part of the process, we'll be streamlining it so that they will be essentially responsible for finding us the three best and lowest bids, and then we can, we can refer to that when we review all of this information, so if we don't like what they've done at that point, then we'll go back. Now, I would, I would, don't think that would be a wise idea, because we're, we're obviously, I think they understand the gravity of the situation just as we do.
Right.
And there's no pricing involved right now, so...
Right.
There are statements of interest with resumes, qualifications, previous work, and so on.
I apologize, I said bid is a danger.
Yeah, no problem, yeah, I might be using the wrong terminology. Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think the process you're describing here, willing down to three, is PennDOT's process, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And I don't want to go bucking PennDOT here, so let's just follow their process and get, get something done with this bridge.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So we wouldn't have heard five anyway?
If, if we had done this through council, we would have had to hear these statements of interest and have these presentations at a meeting, a meeting that would have to be scheduled, a meeting that would have to be advertised, a meeting that would have to be attended and have multiple hours of, just like our regular meetings, so anything that can get this process from point A to B, or from one side of the river to the other, will be, it'll help us.
Call to question?
Go ahead, call, question's called, okay, there's a motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Smith?
I think it's our job to make sure that we have the best bids and we understand the entire project, and I don't believe that listening to five in one night would be that much harder than listening to three, and I'd like to let everybody who wants to have a chance, oh, no.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
In the interest of moving this project forward as quickly as possible, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
And passes?
All right, thank you. All right, that's all we have for the agenda, we'll now have public comment on non-agenda items, anybody in the audience for public comment on non-agenda items? Anybody? Going once, going twice, anybody on the Zoom for non-agenda items? Hold on, hold on, one second, I just want to make sure we're, all right, go ahead. Motion and a second, adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meetings adjourned at 7 o'clock, or restarted at 7:10.
Do you have a paper with my amendment on it? Are mine? I don't, I was just making jokes, if you weren't here, I know that you didn't. This is what my office looks like, though, it looks like I went into my office and I went like this. Hi, Kevin, I like the blue and green. I still have to type all that stuff.
A four-year comparison of totals for the Children's Advocacy Center. Everyone, I think, is familiar with the Advocacy Center. That is a private institution that is run by Shannon Paduto. It's run completely on donations. It does not get county money. They examine children for evidence of sexual offenses. And the point of the Children's Advocacy Center, back before we had a Children's Advocacy Center, these children would have to speak to, you know, they would initially report to someone, then they would speak to the police, then they would speak to a psychologist, then they might have to speak to a doctor or a nurse, then they would testify in trial. So this is, the idea is that it's a one-stop shop, so they don't have to relive this trauma repeatedly. As you can see from this slide, in 2021, we had 457 children seen at the Children's Advocacy Center. Twenty-two was 473. We had a spike in 2023 to 578, which we blame mostly on COVID. And then we're starting to get back to normal levels in 2024. We had 437. Go ahead. This is an age comparison over the course of two years. The first, the first bars, the comparison of bars, birth to six years old. In 2023, we had 107 cases. In 2024, we had 74 cases. From age seven to 12, in 2023, we had 205 cases. In 24, we had half that, 108 cases. And 13 to 17 years old, in 2023, we had 216, and it's increased to 255. Go ahead. I won't even try to go through this. This is comparisons by month. I'll just give you the totals there. So as you can see, there's no rhyme or reason to when they report or how. The three-year comparison basically is all over the map. So it's completely random, the reports for each month over the course of the three-year period since 2022. This is a graph of Cyber Tips. I think everybody knows that Cyber Tips, it's a central location where people can call in suspected abuse of children. Over the course of the last three years, we went from 167 to 199 to a drastic spike last year, 421. I think part of that reason is that we're getting better at identifying and pairing out, you know, which ones are false, but it certainly is a troubling statistic. 421 is the total number that came in, so out of, that isn't 421. Had to go through and siphon out which ones were false reports or duplicate reports. And overall, if I can make any suggestions, not to this council, but to the state government, they really need to fix the way that Cyber Tips come in because there's too many that are duplicates, triplicates, quadruplicates, that we're spending time when we should be out there investigating cases of abuse with children. Along those lines, did we skip one? Pete? Okay, I have one more than you. Okay, next. Talk a little bit about our prosecutions. In 2023, we had 37, 3,411 adult prosecutions in the Court of Common Pleas. In 2024, that went up to almost 4,3,989. That's just adult cases. The juvenile prosecutions are down from 430 in '23 to 378. This is a comparison of cases that were called for trial before the judges. Just looking at 2024, which is the circle graph in front, there were 1,446 cases before Judge Vogt, 625 before Judge Lupus, 697 before Judge Sklarowski. The next case, those were trials by jury. These are trials by judge, which are bench trials without a jury. Judge Vogt had 159. Judge Lupus had 38 called for trial, and Judge Sklarowski had 70 called for trial. Go ahead. The actual numbers of trials over the years, these are, these have actually gone to verdict. Just look at the last two years. 2023 was 53, 2024 was 44. We're within range of what's average for Luzerne County. A little bit about our budget and finance. The revenue, obviously, the District Attorney's Office, much to your dismay, is not a revenue-generating office, so we're never going to run a profit, but I am happy to report that we have seen a drastic increase. The reason for that, I know we've had many discussions about being creative in bringing in more money, rather than, you know, always looking at it only one-sidedly in tightening our belts. In 2023, we had budgeted to bring in $127,050, and we had actually collected $207,709. In 2024, that drastically increased to $352,550, which was, which we thought we would get in, and we had actually collected $314,803. That is largely due to the fees collected, so I petitioned the court to add on a fee for a central processing center, which every defendant has to pay. It's collected by probation, put into a special account that will eventually be used for a central processing center. We are still working on that with the President Judge and the county manager. Next. This is our grant revenue. So just looking at a few of our grants that the office uses to staff, this is, these two are for juvenile victims. On the left-hand side, if you look at, this is Raza Vojo for juvenile victims, 289,416,000. On the right-hand side is the domestic violence grant. In 2024, it was 62,000, and 2024 actually received 119,223.56. So those pay for a number of staffers that are not paid by the county. It's actually reimbursed from the state. Next is our gun violence grants. On the left, you look at what's budgeted for the gun violence prosecution grant was 164,891. What we actually received was 287,824. It's considerably more. The reason for that is some, some of that money was not expended in the previous year, and we were able to carry it over and spend far more than we, or receive, rather, far more than we expected to receive because of that last year's money we rolled over. The gun violence reduction grant, we had budgeted 124,000 and had actually received 110. That money pays for the gun violence detectives and partial salary for one of the ADAs that concentrates on gun violence prosecution. Next. This is traffic safety grants. We have two separate grants. One is community traffic safety. One is police traffic services grant. Community traffic safety on the left, we had budgeted 111,000 and received 119. And for police traffic services, on the left, we had budgeted 245,650 and received 179. The, these are largely used for different sting operations when we go on patrol and pay outside officers to work along with our detectives for DUIs and different influence driving, driving under the influence, rather. Next. Our auto theft task force, as you know, our auto theft task force officer is paid for by a grant as well. We had budgeted $119,648, and we had received $118,549. That pays for anything related to enforcing auto theft, or preventing auto theft, rather. So that is, you know, we've gotten a number of license plate readers, cameras, a vehicle, a number of things associated with that, along with the salary of our detective. This is just a, an overall summary of our budget. For wages and benefits, you can see that we expended $4,760,580. Wages and benefits. The amount that was budgeted was an additional $1,040,000 more than that. So we have actually, we're under budget in wages, $1 million, over $1 million. I would love to tell you that that is a stroke of genius on my part, the $1 million in savings for the county. And in part, it is the stroke of genius of my fiscal clerk, Sherry Middleton, who does watch every penny. However, it is also largely due to the fact that we have all of those vacancies that I mentioned earlier. And also, we look at all of our other expenses. $3,640,000 was expended. We came in under budget in that category, almost $300,000, $273,724. Next. Nope, you can, that's, that's actually the end. I'll take any questions? That's actually the end of my presentation.
Any questions for the District Attorney? Go ahead. Mr. Thor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. Do you see any, a lot of, well, there's a lot of bar charts, pie charts. Do you see any trends that are disturbing or something that we should really be worried about?
The, the trends that I am really worried about, there is a pretty steady increase every year in child sex abuse cases. So when you combine the child pornography cases together with the actual cases of sexual abuse, it's a steady increase. And like I said, I think that's in part due to the fact that we're better at finding them. You know, we're better at sorting through the internet. Some of it's on the dark web, and obviously, they don't do it out in public. But I think part of it is because it's, it's getting more and more prevalent. You know, the more people are exposed to internet pornography and things, the more it's likely to happen. I just, you know, I wish I had some answer for that. We're just trying to throw more resources at it to get more people off the streets that are committing those crimes.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I've spoken with the Victims Resource Center, and they say that human trafficking in our area is on the rise. Are you seeing that trend as well?
Absolutely. Human trafficking is one of the most disturbing crimes for us. It's akin to many of the domestic violence cases that we see, where the victim falls back in love with the offender. In human trafficking cases, you'll, you know, we've discussed this both state and nationwide. I've been to a number of conferences about human trafficking. The victims don't even know they're victims half the time. The other half of the time, they are convinced that they are, you know, the police cannot be trusted, they are not here to help you. And I'm talking about people that are severely beaten, sexually abused over the course of weeks, months, years. When they encounter a police officer who tries to help, they run the other way. So as you can imagine, for, for every 10 people we encounter, we are maybe able to help one or two. And this was the topic at our human trafficking conference up at Stonehenge very recently. So not only is it on the rise, it's very difficult to prosecute, it's difficult to save the victims. You know, they would rather be with the people, they're traffickers because of the psychological effects. Sometimes it's not just a psychological effect on them, but on their family members. There's a threat, you know, hey, we're gonna, you're gonna find your sister and kill her or traffic her if you don't comply. So it's, it's very disturbing from our part. We're doing everything we can, and a large part of it is just education. You know, treating, or teaching police to find the signs and recognize the people that are being trafficked, and the best way to go about convincing them to seek help.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Is this posted online? I was looking for it because I was interested in.
It is not yet posted.
Oh, it's not yet? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, for the DA? Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the County Controller's Annual Report. We're setting the timer for you, Walter.
Okay, good. Okay. Make sure you set it really long.
Give him six minutes, double the three.
Good evening, council. Again, my pleasure to be here to give my annual report once again to council as required by the charter. Before I begin, I just want to thank Peter for his IT skills in running these meetings for us. I know every meeting I come to, as well as everyone that you guys all attend, there's somebody in that booth running this operation for us. And I just want to publicly thank the IT department for that. I'll move on to the second slide, Peter, if you would, please. My second slide deals with the voice for the people. And I just want to tell everybody here that it, this is my, this will be my fourth year coming up. It's been a real pleasure for me to serve the people of the county as a county controller. I also served the people as a county council member before that. It's probably one of the better joys of my life is to be able to serve the people in the government. And I know everybody who sits here probably gets to enjoy that opportunity. It's something that most people in the county probably don't understand, why anybody would put themselves through this type of, of government entity. But we have a need to serve the people, and that's basically what the, the whole drive is for me, is to serve the people of this county and to make sure that government runs as efficiently and, and as, as, as well as it could possibly run. I had the opportunity this year of working with Ramilda Crocamo from, since she's been appointed in May of 2023. And I will tell you that over the many of years that I've worked as a representative of the government, this has probably been the easiest one with less consternation and less anxiety for everybody concerned. So it's really been a pleasure to be the controller for the last three, three years and three months. So, and the next slide, Peter? Just want to take an opportunity to introduce my staff to the council, because a lot of people know what I do, but they don't know who does it. I'm a staff of four people now currently. I should have five, but having a difficult time filling the last position. But we have many people in this office, three, that work really hard at getting the work done, on top of what I, under my direction. And the first one, obviously, in my first slide is Tom Sacola, who's with me tonight as my deputy controller. He has probably been just a little piece of heaven for me. His personality and level of expertise, from, from his experience as a chief financial officer for Geisinger, I, I can't tell you how much experience he brings to my office and, and the ability to run the office in an efficient way when I'm not there, as well as keep everybody on track, on task, and getting the work done. It's really hard to boast about all the work that the Controller's Office does every day and the audits that we accomplish with three people. There's counties out there that have five, six, seven people in home role governments that don't get the work accomplished. We, and, and that's all because of prioritizing. One of the things that Tom brought to the office was huddle meetings. We have huddle meetings at least once a month or more, once every two weeks sometimes, just to sit down and find out what everybody's working on and what we need to do, who has problems, what issues are coming up in the county that may have come from a council member or the county manager. So Tom's been really very beneficial for my office and, and most especially for me. He's the one who keeps me on my even keel, keeps me from going rogue most times. He calls me in and says, Walter, nobody's dying here. So, so kudos to Tom for that. That takes a lot.
Let's increase that guy's salary.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. My next slide, Peter? The next person in my office is Nancy DeFlory. She's been with the office for 11 years. She brings a lot of institutional knowledge to my office. She's been there since, under Michelle Bednar, and she's been there a long time. So there's a lot of governmental knowledge that she brings to the table that helps everybody when we're doing audits and what, what's happened in the past, what did you find for different things, what should we be looking for? That type of thing Nancy brings to my office. So she's been a great help for our office. Next slide. The next person in my office is Eileen Adams. She just came on board last March. We just had a little bit of an anniversary cake for her. When we first interviewed her, Tom and I, we had some questions about, you know, she was very, very quiet, didn't know where she was going, and, and she's still very quiet. But her experience, her office experience that she brings to the office is impeccable. She's gone, we've, we've done over 30, she's done over 30 tax collector audits in the past year that she's been there. That's a lot. My predecessor didn't do 30 audits in the whole eight years she was there. So tax collector audits are something that we have to really stay on top of for compliance, internal controls. We have a lot of tax collectors, 70 of them, on top of all the other work that we do. And it's a lot to keep track of. I've been doing that. And we're pretty well caught up on most tax collectors. As you, as council sees from the reports that we send, we send to you when they're completed, they're nonstop. She's constantly doing something with a tax collector and getting them on board. And we have a couple that, you know, we have to work a little harder than others, but she has been a real asset to the office. Next slide, please. The powers and duties of the controller, I'm going to leave the slide up there, but I'm going to read the verbiage down here below that I wrote in my notes, because I think it's really, really important for people to understand the powers and duties of the controller. The controller has unrestricted access to information from all levels of county, of the county, divisions, everybody involved. I have unrestricted access. The county manager's been very, very cooperative in making sure that I have that access, which is a benefit to the people of this county. I was not able to have that access back when we had a prior county manager. So it's been very helpful for my office. When we need information, we were able to contact division heads, department heads at any time without anybody saying you have to go through me, which restricts our ability. So I want to just thank the manager for that ability to be able to have the unrestricted access as required by the charter. But I want to read this, my, my note below there, which is in the, in the slide. I said, to be perfectly clear, this county controller is no one's lapdog. I just want to make that really clear. But works every day for the people of Luzerne County, and this has been demonstrated time and time again for the past 15 years that I have been watching county government. I constantly attend county meetings, and just because I don't stand at the podium screaming and yelling about the administration or county council, does not mean I am not effective. The IRS is very effective. Everybody who has to pay their taxes by April 15th pays them by April 15th. And it's not because the IRS will come screaming at you, it's because you know they're going to be looking. And that's what this office has brought to the county over the past three and a half years, is that people in the county know that somewhere along the line, the county controller may be asking a question about something because somebody said something. And so we have that halo effect, as Tom Sacola calls it, where people in the county are, I don't want to say they're afraid of the controller, but they certainly understand my, my position as the controller and what my duties are. And it's very important that we work hand in hand with the council and the manager to make sure that that stays in place. Because that's, the county controller is basically the only control, the only control mechanism in this county under home role. County council's elected, the controller's elected independent, I'm the only independent the manager's appointed. So without the controller's oversight, council doesn't have any information if the manager so chooses not to give it to you. This manager's been very forthcoming. You could have a manager that's not, and that's where you need the controller. So it's very, very important that we keep the power of the controller where it is. Next slide, Peter, please. Responsibilities of the controller. The controller reports to the people of Luzerne County and works together with the county council and administration to provide to co-equal branches of government the information to be effective checks and balances on home role county charters. The duties and responsibilities of the county controller in our home role form of government is similar to the duties of the Pennsylvania Auditor General and the Inspector General's Office of Washington DC. We perform almost the same duties. We have unrestricted access. We report to no one except to our office. We're independent to the people, and our job is to make sure that we keep everybody accountable, things are efficient, programs are running well, there's internal controls, and those are the jobs of the controller's office. We don't have any ability to force anybody to do anything on our findings, and that's where the cooperation of council comes in so handy, is when the controller brings a report or sends a report to council and there's findings in there, we expect as the controller's office to have council do their level best to correct those problems or deficiencies so government is more efficient, more accountable, there's no fraud, there's no waste, and there's no abuse. So that's, that's basically in a nutshell, the duty of the controller. Next slide, Peter, please. I'll go on to my 25 annual report to give a synopsis of what happened in '24, as well as our, our projections for '25. So the next slide deals with teamwork with the county council and manager. I've alluded to that many times during my presentation already. But despite not being provided any authority in home role to have the office findings and recommendations corrected, we have begun to post, post audit communications of recommendations and findings and request a report of what has been implemented, implemented or changed, changes have occurred. We follow up with tax collectors. This is something that we started in our office, that we send a letter to a tax collector and say, we found issues in your past audit. What have you done to correct those issues? So they know that we continually are watching to make sure they're addressing our findings. It's really, really important that we don't just go and do an audit. It's also important that we follow up, and that's why I made the comment about leases. It's very important that we follow up. Vehicle audits, we did for Fuel. We did a lot of audits in the past. We just need to stay on top of those. Time glitz away from us, we have a lot of things to do, and sometimes they get away. So a little nudge, little reminder, doesn't help, doesn't hurt anybody to make sure they stay on top and making sure things are efficient, and we correct any issues that we had in the audit. So that's one of the things that teamwork is so important with, between council, the manager, and the administration. Next slide, Peter? The next slide will show you the budget that we had in 2024 and 2025. It's pretty self-explanatory, the numbers that are there is what's been budgeted. The level expense budget between '24 and '25 accomplished because of the experience at all levels of the office. We haven't overspent, and in fact, we reduced our budget so we can continue with a zero-based budget, as the budget director, Ms. Rozell, instructed everybody to do. So we did a zero-based budget, and it was difficult. We cut a lot of money out of, council cut a lot of money from my budget, but we're going to have to deal with it and proceed accordingly. Next slide, Peter? The, the controller budget comparison is there. You'll see that I spent almost the same amount in 2024 as the budgeted amount. I underspent by $32,764 in my department. So we were budgeted $278,000 in expenditures, and we only spent 245. So we stayed within the guidelines of the allocation from the county council. Next slide, Peter? 2024 audit review. There's some of the audit findings that we put in there, most importantly is the tax collector audits. There were some tax collectors that haven't been done in years, decades, months. I mean, we have a lot. There was like, we completed 28 county tax collector audits in 2024 alone, and 32 tax collector audits in 2023. There, there's a lot of tax collectors that we have to do, and they take time. They take, we, we've streamlined the process so we can get as many done as we can. But the, the biggest problem that we have is there were some tax collectors that have never been done, never. And that's really, that's really a concern for the controller's offices. We see we have some issues with some tax collectors. For the most part, tax collectors do a fabulous job. We do have some that we keep a closer eye on than others, but for the most part, tax collectors do a fabulous job. They bring us in of, almost all of our revenue of 120-some million. That's a lot of money that we have to keep control of. And independent tax collectors are difficult because they're independently elected, and they are in control of their money. And so it's really important that the county keeps an eye on our portion. The municipality doesn't do as well of a job, a good a job as this school district, but the county controller is, is all over that. We're making sure that we have compliance stuff, we make sure that the municipalities, they just do a 10,000-foot view. They want to see what did, what were we supposed to get and what did we get? And that's the extent of their audit. We get, we get down into the, into the bottom parts of, of working with tax collectors to make sure that they're following the guidelines of the statute, which is really important. Next slide, please. This, this is the resolution. I just wanted council to be aware when we were doing the audit of 21, a couple of the 25 tax collectors this year. This resolution needs to be adopted by council, and I'm sure that I, I've made the chairman aware, it'll be on your agenda somewhere soon, that you have to pass a resolution for tax collectors to be paid for the next four years. So that's something that has to come on your agenda. That should have been done probably last year sometime, but somewhere along the line it got away from us, and we didn't get a chance to do that. So we do have to pass something by 20, the end of '25, so we can pay tax collectors in the next four years. Next slide, Peter, please. The other activities of the controller's office that we did in '24, we worked with, the county manager asked us to work with the purchasing department, to work with the Office of Law to do a purchasing manual. We've attended the Scranton Wilkes-Barre Airport Board meetings, as Mr. Wolowitz and Ms. McDermott are aware, that we're there as the bid openers and, and oversight. So we, we show up to all of the meetings. We're, we're responsible for working with the Operations Division when they did the audit or the auction recently. To their credit, they raised $149,000 for the county by selling used equipment, which was done, you know, back in, I think, August of last year. Was very, very helpful to get rid of the equipment, number one. It gets money into the coffers, but more importantly, it gets the insurance issue that we pay for insurance on these equipment that we didn't even own any, or didn't need or use. So we saved money on that front as well. And let me see if I hear there was something else. That's it for that. Next slide, Peter? 2025 proposed audits. This is just a guideline, as the charter requires, that I tell council what my proposed audits are for this year. There's, there's a list of the audits that we're planning on doing. This, this list gets moved around quite a bit as needs come along. Sometimes we get a tip about something that needs to be looked into, either by the manager or somebody in the county needs us to take a look at something, so we, we get off our schedule a little bit. But for the most part, one of the things I want to note on that is the jury, the, the court jury fund, and it's, and for these cheats, it's the last item on that slide. Mr. Hindmarsh has now moved to a place where they're going to do debit cards for jury payment, which is great. We were really concerned, and that was one of the things that we looked at when we did these cheats for the district magistrates, for the, for the checks that weren't cashed. One of the concerns that we had was we have all this money sitting there that has to be ass-cheated. Well, so he took the recommendation and decided that the best process would be is to institute a debit card program for jurors. You give them a debit card now, so we don't have to worry about You give them a debit card now, so we don't have to worry about that. Payment where you give a juror $15 for attending a jury, they don't cash the check. Now you have to cheat it. So it saves a lot of work and kudos to the court administration for working towards that. That's been an ongoing thing for years. So I, I really appreciate the court's cooperation in that effort. The only other thing that I wanted to note is the, if anybody has a questions about the 25 proposed audits, I'm more than happy to answer those. Our, again, I, I can't tell you how important it was for that time and attendance issue. I didn't put it on my 24 slide, but that has gone, it has. And I think we are saving a lot of money, and I think it makes, it makes our accounting system more, when we do payroll, it makes it more accurate, as opposed to when we used to transfer data from ADP, Cronos, and New World. So we want to try and use New World as much as we can. We paid, I think, $3.5 million for that software. A lot of the modules we aren't using. The manager asked to start using the contract module, so we're working towards that end as well with the controller's office, office of law, and different agencies to try and institute a contract module in our software system that we pay the financial system for, because it's really important when we have contracts for a couple hundred thousand or a couple million dollars, that the money's taken from the contract appropriately, so we know how much money we're spending and how much money we have left and if we're gonna overspend. So that's another step that the manager's asking to have done, that I think was, is very, very helpful in accounting and internal controls and also keeping track of what's the most efficient process. The process we have now is not efficient at all. Contracts expire because people don't know. Leases expire because people just don't pay attention because somebody's left the office and, you know, we have a huge turnover in departments and people don't know what's going on because somebody came in. So it's really important that we do things that tie into one main accounting system. So when we have an issue with something, we could just bring it up, either budget and finance could bring it up, or somebody can bring it up and say, what's the expiration date of that contract, and boom, you could find it. You don't have to find a spreadsheet. So we're working on that. That's the next step for the, the manager asked us to do. So we're gonna work with the office of law and, and the different departments to try and institute that. The CECL, next slide, please, Peter? The CECL hotline, we only had 25, I'm, just give a brief report on that, on the CECL. We had, it was a total of approximately 25 emails that I got into CECL. They're all confidential, obviously, and, and calls between 25 emails and calls to the controller's office. The complaints were all addressed by the manager. Usually what I'll do is if I get a CECL complaint, I go right directly to the manager and tell her. And tell the manager we have an issue, and she takes it under advisement and addresses it with the parties that need to be addressed and reports back to me and says it's been taken care of or not, or we need more information, and we, we go from there. So the CECL line is very, very important for residents of the county. If they see something and they want to see something, that's a great opportunity for them to do that, and the manager can work on that. Next slide, please. So that, that finishes my presentation. If anybody has any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them for you.
Controller Griffith.
Was that 15 minutes or what?
I, I wasn't counting, but I actually have a question about the CECL hotline. Can you give us an example? You don't, obviously don't have to use anything specific. Can you give us an example of something that maybe has been reported, or is it, is it all different types of people that are reporting these, these situations? Is it a lot of county employees? Is it mostly citizens? Do you have any statistics on things like that?
Mostly, they're all, mostly 90% of them, I would say, are anonymous. Very rarely will they tell me who they are, and that's, that's kind of what the whole design of the CECL thing is, is so people who have a concern, they don't really want to be identified, but they want to see something taken care of. So I could get a call about somebody who may be punching, not punching in and out and going home for the day, getting paid for the day. I'll get various calls about things of that kind of nature. So those kind of concerns, normally they wouldn't, we have an ACE commission that we use to get those kind of concerns, and they also call the controller's CECL line. And so if I get those type of calls, they don't have to identify themselves, and we don't, really, I would rather them not if they're, especially if they're an employee. I would rather just have it turned over to the manager and say, hey, this is what came in. And manager Crocamo and I meet usually most Mondays for coffee, and I give her a brief synopsis of things that are going on, and very, very helpful to get things addressed as best we can. Some things can, some things can't be, but we'll correct it.
Mr. Wiskavich.
I'm just curious why you deleted Carl Venus's picture out of your report this year.
Because I, I knew, I knew that was gonna be one of those Barney Fife pictures. I took it right out, because I knew that, that was gonna be one of your comments, and I figured, well, I didn't want to put Carl on the spot again, so.
Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, I want to just compliment you and your staff. Years and very efficient and uncovering a lot of good things that need to be addressed, and I think you're doing a great job, and it's a very good report you have tonight. Actually, I didn't think that was Carl Venus. I thought that was a selfie. Is that a selfie of you?
No, that wasn't a selfie of me. That was Carl's.
Oh, okay.
That was Carl. Kevin was right on that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and that's, there, there are things that we do that are really important. You know, we have a tax collector from Fairview, so I'm sorry. We had a tax collector just recently that we had, we had an issue with trying to get the new, newly appointed tax collector, and it worked out very well, that we were able to communicate very well with Fairview Township, and we got it straightened out. And now they're working in the correct direction between myself and Ms. Rozell, who's budget and finance, who's in charge of tax collection. We worked together with the tax, the treasurer's office collaboratively with the manager, and we sent emails and got it all squared away. So you can't stress how important it is to have cooperation as opposed to somebody saying, that's not your swim lane. Don't go there. So we don't want that. We want everybody to be in the pool. We don't want to be having swim lanes, because it's to the benefit of the people if we're swimming together, not independently. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Ms. Krishnowski.
I just wanted to come and ask your question.
Yeah, we had, we had some fun up at the VA. That was a lot of fun, and I, I really, I really was apprehensive about going, but I'm really glad I went. To be with those gentlemen from, who had served in the armed forces and go to the, that's probably the first time I was at the VA hospital, to be honest with everybody. And it was a really, really enjoyable experience to just see those people who have served our country and, and given so much, to participate in that, just to be a part of that was so much fun. So I was glad that Kevin Clocker invited me, and, and it was great. It was a great time.
Any other questions for the controller? All right, thank you very much for your presentation.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, number three, receive and discuss budget reports for February 2025. Ms. Rozell?
Good. No problem. No, thank you. First of all, I want to apologize for the copies that you were given before the meeting. We had a 2024 accounts payable listing, so that's what happened there. So we just reran both reports for you. So if you look at your second set of reports that you were given, the first report is the revenue report, which at the end of February, revenue earned is at 4% of budget or $5.8 million. The current year tax collections at the end of February are $451,000, but that's only for seven days of tax collection. So the bills were sent out, if you remember, on February 19th. For March, we've already collected in excess of $10 million. So March and April will be big tax collection months for us. Expenses are at $17,352 or 12% of our budget. Next, you have your listing of the budget transfers, which at this point are minimal, followed by the accounts payable detail report. The last report is your treasurer's report, which is showing a cash balance of $120,41,818 at the end of February. The cash balance at the end of January was $132 million. Our interest earned for the month of February, $319,989, of which $151,947 is related to ARPA. Our year-to-date interest for the two months of this year so far at the end of February is $698,369, so we continue to earn a decent amount of interest each month. Our ARPA cash balance currently sits at $42,208. ARPA interest earned year-to-date is $348,178, and then our ARPA interest earned since inception is $8.2 million. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, Ms. Rozell, thank you for that. I, I have different members of the public come up to me and tell me how much ARPA interest we have sitting there that we could use, and I sort of disagree with them. I know you just said we earned $348,000 this year, year-to-date, and I know you gave me the total, 8 million and something since the beginning.
$8.2 million.
How much do we actually have in that account, just interest alone? Because the, I think we obligated or used some of that interest for other projects.
We did. We did obligate some of the interest to other projects. So, I mean, at this, I think at the end of the year, we had about $600,000. I'd have to get you the exact amount, but I think we had about $600,000. So now if we've earned another $350,000, we're probably close to a million again.
Not, not four, five, or eight million, like people are telling me.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And I disagree, and they say that's what we have.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Rozell? All right, yeah, well, we don't want to get restarted on that. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Rozell. All right, well, now, public comment? Anybody in the public? Public comment in the audience, on the Zoom? Going once, going twice?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, names adjourned. Thank you very much.